For the next item, I am so thrilled and it is with much enthusiasm that I bring forth the Recommended Financial Plan for Fiscal Year 2023. And Mr. Wack is coming to the podium to present, but I'll provide some opening remarks on this item before he gets started. And again, would just note, great enthusiasm around the Recommended Financial Plan presented for you today. Using our School Division Strategic Plan, Destination 2025, always as our guide, we have developed a spending plan that truly supports our goals for academic excellence, inclusive, supportive, and safe learning environments, and providing adequate support and benefits to recruit and retain a team of exemplary educators and staff. So while our fiscal approach remains conservative, we're committed to providing innovative instructional programs, real-world experiences for students, and wraparound services for the whole child. To that end, this budget reflects, our budget proposal rather, reflects an increase of $23 million, or 4.1%, compared to the current budget, and includes a significant investment in our incredible employees. Funding for new programming, like the Environmental Studies and Health and Human Services Centers, and many other initiatives. And it also includes a plan to eliminate our reliance on ESER funding as we move into sustaining essential functions into the coming years. And before you hear the budget proposal formally from Mr. Wack, I would like to take a moment to express my appreciation to our entire School Division Budget Team, many of whom are with us. I see Debbie back there, okay? John's here. And then I also want to, of course, express appreciation to County Manager Don Vitolakis and his staff for their assistance in developing this plan. And I see Deputy County Manager Brandon Hinton is with us. Appreciate having him here. Working together, these amazing teams, I know we will continue to invest in our greatest resource for the future, the young people of Henrico County. So, Mr. Wack, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. This afternoon, I'd like to share with you the Recommended Fiscal Year 2023 Budget. But before I start, I did want to recognize the Budget Team for their countless hours working on this process. And again, we have, thanks to Ms. Hargrave in the back here. So every year, the budget is developed in consultation with stakeholders, giving multiple public opportunities for input while aligning our available resources with our top priorities. This year, written comments were submitted in early December, as staff considered the best way to deploy the target amount of funding provided by the County Manager. The presentation of the Fiscal Year 2023 Recommended Budget today will be followed by a public hearing on this proposal on February 10th, before the School Board is to take action on February 24th. The funding priorities reflected in the Fiscal Year 2023 Recommended Budget directly align with the strategic plan adopted by the School Board. In particular, they support our four cornerstones: Safety and Wellness, providing support for social, emotional, cultural, and physical needs; Academic Growth, focusing on core curricula, electives, and life skill development opportunities; Equity and Opportunity, reducing disparities among students from varying demographics and backgrounds; and finally, Relationships, encouraging collaboration and engagement throughout the entire community. Looking back at some major changes in our budget development and the availability of funding to meet our students' needs, the Fiscal Year 2021 Adopted Budget ended up incorporating $4.5 million in funding reductions, rather than progressing towards our multi-year goals due to the initial impact of the pandemic on our revenues. The Fiscal Year 2022 Adopted Budget began to put our progress back on track, restoring frozen positions, adding back funding for professional development and instructional supplies, and also allowing for wage market longevity salary increases for county and schools' employees. Meanwhile, some of the pressure on our general fund budget was alleviated by our ESER II and III Grant Awards, which are providing three-years' worth of funding for 61 full-time positions, including library assistants, startup costs for the Henrico Virtual Academy, capital improvements at the campus at Virginia Randolph, and other initiatives. Further, we've been able to use one-time federal funds related to the pandemic for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning improvements, library book replacement, student assessment tools, and learning loss, including significant expansion of our summer academy efforts during the upcoming two years. The Fiscal Year 2023 Operating Budget reflects the following notable changes from the current year's adopted budget. As Dr. Cashwell mentioned, our general fund budget is increasing by about $23 million, or just over 4% compared to Fiscal Year 2022, based on the target amount we received from the County Manager, and that includes some growth in state revenues. Our debt service budget, associated with previously approved capital projects, is increasing about 10%. The self-supporting School Nutrition Fund is increasing by about 5%, primarily due to benefits changes and pay adjustments. And our state and federal special revenue funds are increasing by about 8%, primarily due to recurring personnel costs supported by our ESER II and III Grants. So overall, the operating budget from all funds is growing nearly 5%, while we note that the Fiscal Year 2023 figures don't yet include funding for pay raises that will be added later during the budget process. We'd now like to walk through some of the most significant new initiatives included in the Fiscal Year 2023 Recommended General Fund Budget, starting with items associated with Safety and Wellness Cornerstone. 22 new licensed health positions are being added, which will help us stay ahead of potential changes to the standards of quality requirements. That includes psychologists, social workers, and nurses. Five school counselors are also being added, keeping us in front of the SOQs, and this is above and beyond the 30 counselors added through ESER funds. Our full-time nurse contracts will be budgeted for eight hours per day, which is an enhancement that started this school year. In pupil transportation, in Fiscal 2023, we'll have funding for increased bus driver pay granted this year, for safety and attendance bonuses, as well as 11 new full-time bus assistants and 25 temporary bus assistants. We are also adding eight new maintenance positions to our facilities team, which will help address enhanced cleaning standards and better staff our buildings. Moving to items supporting our academic growth cornerstone, we are converting 40 more exceptional ed instructional assistants from temporary to full-time, which will get us back on track to address the recommendation from the Holton Report. We're also adding three English-as-a-second-language teachers, three library art, music, and physical ed, or LAMP, teachers, four gifted and talented teachers, and two exceptional ed reading teachers. Further, we are increasing instructional substitute funding, and that will allow for one or more permanent substitutes to be working at each school. Now shifting to items related to our Equity and Opportunity Cornerstone, the Recommended Budget allows for an expansion of Achievable Dream Academy to the 7th grade. Funding is included for a Center Director and operating costs for new specialty centers at Verona High School and Hermitage High. Seven positions are being added for expanded opportunities at our A-Centers at Highland Springs and Hermitage High. The Fiscal Year 2023 General Fund Budget will also reflect the transfer of 10 Title 6B Exceptional Ed Classroom Teachers from Special Revenue. And finally, the local match for the Virginia Preschool Initiative is increasing in the Moving to items associated with a Relationships Cornerstone, funds have been added to cover the lease at Regency Square Mall, approved by the School Board last month, to house our adult education programs. The Recommended Budget provides for the Associate Principal Positions that were established this school year, to provide one at each elementary school. And with support from the County Administration, we're converting six Residency and Compliance Officers from temporary to full-time next school year. And we have also allowed for tuition increases at the Regional Maggie L. Walker Governor's School and at Code RVA. Finally, we have several items that support our strategic goal related to recruiting, retaining, and rewarding our employees. Funding has been added to cover group health premiums increase, so employees will not see any reduction in their take-home pay. The budget provides $3.1 million in Career Ladders funding, which will allow for the addition of teacher leaders, salary increases for advanced professional credentials, and professional learning advancement. We are adding two Human Resources Specialists that will enhance our recruitment efforts. The Recommended Budget also allows for the conversion of up to 150 bus driver contracts from 10 months to 11 months. And we have also included funding for desk audits, which will allow for the extension of certain clerical contracts and re-grades from some of our other support positions. As in prior years, the Recommended Budget does not include funding for salary increases, which will be added later in the budget process for both county and schools' employees consistent with the county's Unified Pay Plan. We'd note that the balance of funding for longevity increases granted this past fall in the second quarter of the current fiscal year is included in Fiscal Year 2023. Looking at the General Fund overall, these pie charts illustrate the major spending categories of the budget, and we can see that instruction remains the lion's share of our expenditures at 76% of the budget. These pie charts illustrate the major revenue categories for the General Fund. We can see that the target increase of just over $23 million makes up the difference in Fiscal Year 2023. And again, those funds will likely come from a combination of county and state funds. And as noted in a previous slide, our federal and state special revenue funds are increasing by about $6.1 million, or 8%. These funds are essentially earmarked for specific purposes and programs from our grantors. And the vast majority of the increase from Fiscal Year 2022 Adopted Budget is tied to our ESER II and ESER III Grants, about $4.5 million of that increase. Now, as we look past the Fiscal Year 2023 Recommended Budget in order to plan for 2024 and beyond, we should consider the following. Our enrollment trends have been somewhat unclear, particularly when considering the impact of the pandemic on in-person instruction. And we have several allocations of federal grant funds that will no longer be available beyond Fiscal Years 2023 and 24. Our safety protocols will continue to impact how we utilize space in our facilities and apply personal protective equipment. We have made certain adjustments to virtual instruction during the past two years that will evolve as we refine the long-term offerings of the Henrico Virtual Academy. Our social and emotional supports have become even more vital as we consider the long-term effects of the pandemic on both students and staff. And finally, compensation will always be a factor as we strive to recruit and retain the strongest workforce possible. And again, as a reminder, across-the-board raises for our employees will be added later in the process. So looking back and looking forward, I'll note that we took into account public comment and in-person and public written comments in December. Today, we're presenting the Fiscal Year 2023 Recommended Budget, and a public hearing on this proposal will be held on February 10th. So the School Board will be approving this proposal with any amendments on February 24th and adopting the final version of Fiscal Year 2023 Budget on May 12th, which would incorporate any adjustments from the county, including for employee compensation. So that concludes the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions, and wanted to note that our 185-page document is now is being posted on our website this afternoon, and you have a copy before you, so we have, of course, a lot more details available.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Mr. Wack. And I'd also like to recognize that from the Henrico County Government side, we've got Brandon Hinton today joining us. Thank you so much for being here. And wow, that was a great presentation. That's something happy to talk about. And now I'm going to turn to my Board members. Ms. Ogborne, do you have any questions or comments?
Some questions and comments, absolutely. Thank you. First of all, thank you for all of this. It's some light reading for us on those, maybe those nights we can't get to sleep. We'll get this book out. But now, it's so important. It's one of the main things that we do as Board members, is to work with the team to get this going. So this obviously gets the ball rolling. But when I look at this, and I looked at the list that you have shared with us as to what we're adding to our budget, because obviously, we have fixed things that we can't affect every year. Some of the highlights to me are being able to cover that increase in insurance for our staff members. That's very important. Some of the things that when we go to keeping our employees with us and meeting their needs, I think is so important, especially when we have a teacher shortage. We want to keep our employees and support them as best we can. But when I look at, when I looked at all of the additions to the budget, I sort of did what you did. I put it in, chunked it by, this is affecting instruction, this is affecting student support. And I really see a trend to focusing on that. And that's what I think we really need to be doing right now. We've got families and students who are facing a lot of challenges, and to have more mental health, more counselors, and, you know, directly supporting the mental health of our students, I think is so important. Supporting our bus drivers and being able to turn some of them to, you know, longer employees with the 11th-month employees, and having those benefits that I think will help keep our employees. I think that's just so important. But all this enables us to hire qualified people, especially when we're turning some of our part-time employees into full-time employees. That's better for their families and for them, and for their bottom line of their budgets, of course, but it also allows them to be there more to support our students, which I think is so important. You know, we've got a lot of part-time folks who are in our exceptional ed department, and I can't remember the number, if you don't mind going back, one, the 40 exceptional ed instructional assistants to full-time. That is huge for support of our students and for our teachers. And to me, that is one of the most important things we've done. Our counselors, now we're turning attention to our instructional assistants. And this has been long a goal of the Board, to be able to do this. So finally, being able to get to that item, I'm really pleased to see. And having more positions, and I assume we will figure out where the need is for our ESL teachers, our library, art, music, and PE teachers, where they need to go. Being on the gifted advisory committee, now getting four more gifted and talented teachers is something that that committee has been wanting for a while. If you could expand a little bit on our exceptional ed reading teachers and where, what their duties will be, I think would be, whichever.
I think Dr. Cashwell's a little more. I'll grab that one. I'll grab that one. And I see Dr. Hughes coming for it as well, and she can add in on anything I've missed. But, you know, we, when we think about meeting student needs, and particularly our exceptional education learners, this will allow us really to dig into the area of literacy, and I believe these are positioned for potentially secondary use and doing some pilot work on how we may be able to expand programming in the future based on a model they're going to be working on in exceptional education, particularly in the area of literacy. Did I miss anything?
Nope, that's exactly. It's own middle school reading programs, so we can close some gaps. We know sometimes when our students leave elementary school, they're not quite fluent enough in reading, and we want to make sure we're able to close those gaps in middle school, so we can prepare them as they move on to high school.
That's awesome, and it's obviously new for us. But again, this to me is focusing on supporting our students. We have, you know, a lot of students who are facing learning loss. We have students who are facing difficulties of all kinds, just a tough time, you know, for all of us. But to be able to focus in on areas of need is what I see in this list. And it is targeted, it is focused to meeting the needs of our kids in so many different ways, and of our teachers. So kudos for the team for putting this list together. I'm also really excited to see support for Code RVA, Maggie Walker, Specialty Centers, Achievable Dream, our nurses, all of these areas that are, you know, obviously, costs are going up, we've got some tuition increases. I want to be able to not tell our community, I'm sorry, we had to stay the budget the same, and, you know, so we have fewer kids that can go to Maggie Walker. We're keeping our spots there, we're covering that tuition increase, same for Code RVA. That is, again, that's a student support. So I am, you know, it's dry when you read the budget, but to be able to look at it and find some joy and support for our kids is, to me, just actually really, really welcomed news. But I would be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Hinton and the Board of Supervisors and the County Manager for their support of the work that we do. And if anybody was listening to the retreat last weekend, obviously, that was there. They asked a lot of really good questions. But the cooperation that we're seeing and the support from the county side is so needed, and it's just that we're good partners to get this work done. So thank you, and I'll stop rambling, but, and pass it on to Ms. Atkins. I'm assuming Mrs. Kinsella, we're passing to Ms. Atkins.
Yes, please, Ms. Atkins.
But thank you, Mr. Wack. So I am very pleased with the direction in making our school budgets whole and equitable. I think that it is a very wise funding strategy in our effort to move forward. The 40 exceptional education instructional assistants moving to full-time is incredible. It's been a long time coming, and it's here. And that is something to shout about, along with some of the other positions that were outlined there, the bus drivers assistants. There's a lot to be happy about in this presentation. One of the things that Dr. Cashwell, if you could expand upon, is the desk audit funding for support positions. Can you share a little bit more about that?
Absolutely. So this pot of funding will allow us to take a look at various positions where we may be examining the position duties based on where the position is actually graded, and in some, sometimes we have to adjust that. And so this gives us the funding to do that. So we might, for example, be looking at particular clerical positions that have evolved over time and kind of auditing them with our Human Resource Department to determine if we may need to make some grade changes so that there's appropriate compensation for the role being fulfilled. I hope I described that adequately. I see a nod from our HR folks, so yeah, but that, this allows us, we've got several areas we had planned to evaluate in the pre-pandemic budget, if you will, and so this will allow us to get back on track with that.
And so it's so important to understand, while there is very direct communication on what's being added and expanded upon, what's shifting from, you know, temp to permanent, but there's also a very intentional effort to look at other areas too, particularly what Dr. Cashwell just shared around that desk audit funding for support positions. But there are other areas that Dr. Cashwell and her team are also looking at as we try to forge ahead. And it's critical that we keep in mind that this is a great indicator of moving ahead, of moving forward in the direction that we all have wanted to move in for a very, very long time. And if you're looking for something to give you a sign of hope, this is it. Not only what you're reading on this screen, but all the work and discussions that are taking place that's not displayed on this screen, it is happening right now because we are moving forward. And I'm so grateful, again, for the county and the collaborative effort, Mr. Hinton, who is here. This is what teamwork looks like. This is a great example of what a leading division does. And I'm so grateful, again, to Dr. Cashwell for her vision that has always been there to get us here and to continue moving forward, and to be able to communicate it in a way that's concrete, because that's just as important. So thank you so much, Mr. Wack, for all of your efforts and your team efforts as well. That concludes my statements.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Mrs. Shea?
Hey, thank you. All right, so a couple of pieces. First of all, I will just add my voice to the excitement around converting these IA positions. This is actually something I specifically heard from my principals. These are hard positions to fill, but they have proven in a lot of ways to be even harder positions to retain, because some of our neighboring localities do have them as full-time. And specifically, they've shared that some of their, some of their best IAs that they've had for years, when they turned 26 and need benefits, they've had to leave Henrico and go to a neighboring division. And so having this opportunity to be full-time and retain those, as one principal said, would be a total game changer for him. And so I'm really excited to see this in the budget. I'm also excited to see the expansion of permanent substitutes. I think hopefully, right now is a bit of an anomaly with the amount of substitute coverage we need, but we know we have a sub shortage. And so in order, having permanent substitutes provides for more coverage in the buildings, but it also adds to those relationships with students for perm subs. And just a little bit, a little bit off-topic from the budget, but related to substitutes, I've heard some feedback of people who want to be part of the solution and want to be a sub, but they're having a hard time locating the sub application. And I know where it is on the website, because I know where, because, but anything we can do to kind of blast that out and help people find it to be part of a solution would be great. I want to ask, look at the out-of-county tuition piece a little bit. I know this, this is really exciting for some of our teachers who are bringing their students with them to Henrico County. Can you touch a little bit on what grades does this pertain to?
It's our current policy is elementary, so I know there have been requests to examine that policy and see if we might expand it to secondary. At that, at this time, that's not been done, so this would account for K5 at this moment, unless we were to see a policy shift, and then it might broaden that.
Thank you. I would like to add my voice to working on that policy shift or considering that policy shift to include secondary as well. As we look to recruit and retain teachers, anything we can do to provide them more flexibility to stay in the county is a win. And, you know, some of our other localities are allowing secondary to come, albeit for a fee, but they have permitted secondary. And I've heard from some of our staff, some of our secondary staff, that this would be a huge help to them as well. So if we could look at perhaps a policy shift so that this budgetary benefit would expand K through 12. And then the other piece I'll just briefly touch on is the career ladders. I'm glad to see this back in the, back in the budget. It was in our pre-COVID budget. And particularly because I want to be, I want us to be really explicit right now for our teachers in our words and our compensation and all of these things that Henrico County considers our education, or, excuse me, Henrico County considers our educators to be professionals, and we consider them to be skilled experts in what they do. And I think, especially right now with other rhetoric coming out of other offices, that it is so important that we communicate that to our educators, and we can say it with our words, but we can also say it with our compensation and things like career ladders and supporting autonomy, and so our classroom autonomy. And so I'm glad to see career ladders back on this slide. And then, Mr. Wack, you mentioned looking at salary kind of at the end of things, and I know why that is, but if you could articulate why that's an end of process that involves the Board of Supervisors, I think that might be helpful.
Henrico County, as I mentioned during the presentation, has a Unified Pay Plan where typically, I mean, across the board, salary increases be granted for county employees and schools' employees in the same amount. And so that's part of, part of the county's overall development of the budget now that they would have the School Board's, the Superintendent's Recommended Budget for the next year, that will look into how much funding is available to grant organization-wide salary increases. So again, that is not in the Fiscal Year 2023 Recommended General Fund, where we're already increasing by 4.1%.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Wack. And again, and thank you, Mr. Hinton, for being here. It is really great to see you kind of in the house, if you will, but really the support from the government side. And I think it's been unlike any other year how closely the finance departments have worked together to make great things happen. So we appreciate your support, and that is all from me.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Okay, where to begin? I think I'm going to start by saying thank you. And first, I know if Reverend Cooper was here, he would say, probably on behalf of all of us, but since AVR, Sir, Academy at Virginia Randolph, serves all of Henrico County Public Schools, all five of our district, I'm just going to say for him and for the Board, if y'all don't mind, that we are so excited about the opportunities that we're going to have for our students and staff with this rebuild. And now, on to other budget items. I appreciate Mrs. Shea bringing forward the tuition, expanding tuition. I would ask that as we look at that, perhaps we look at some of the unintended consequences of that. Perhaps, you know, I know folks who may be listening to this meeting might think, wow, what about capacity in our schools? And if Dr. Cashwell could just clarify our variance process, if this expansion were to occur, to recruit, retain, reward employees... if this expansion were to occur, to recruit, retain, reward employees, if you could just explain that.
I'm happy to speak to that. So currently, in our standing policy, which is related to the elementary level, if a staff member wanted to have their child attend Henrico County schools, they would have to go through the formal variance process, which means it would be considered based on space available. So it could be denied based on capacity to begin with. But assuming there were space and other conditions were met, then the variance may be granted. And in this case, what the budget does is eliminates the tuition fee that was originally associated with that.
Yes, thank you for highlighting that. When I look at our numbers, I think we have about 3,500 out-of-county employees. So it was important for me to just bring forward the unintended, perhaps, consequences that folks may worry about. But at the same time, the variance is only good for a year at a time, correct?
Yes, that is correct. Those are approved annually, so absolutely. And, you know, we would certainly want to be thinking, as you said, about all of the unintended consequences and understanding we're pleased to add that as a value. We, we would have to evaluate each year the cost and make sure that it's sustainable going forward. So, you know, anytime an employee would be entering into a variance like this, it would be year to year. And then we would make it known this, you know, if it's without cost, it's for this year, and then that's evaluated annually.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. So exciting, the employee compensation. Just going to highlight it, and I'm going to let Mr. Wack just talk about why we're not going to hear about the compensation piece of it perhaps until March. Could you just explain a little bit of that? How the timing works with other monies that impact our budget?
So again, that, that would, that's typically would be released by, by the county manager in, in March, where we would have, have a proposal where it would be consistent with the, the amount of salary increase that would be granted to county employees as well as schools. And I think that also gives them more time to consider the needs of all the individual departments and, and have more time to, to look at the revenue forecast to see how, how much of a salary increase that would, that would support.
And if I might interject, I, I want to appreciate both you and Chair Shea for bringing that up, because we want to make sure our employees know that compensation increases are not forgotten as a part of this budget process. And while we did address some, some areas there with no health insurance increase and other things when it comes to a potential compensation increase, that is addressed later in the budget process. I think it does bear repeating a number of times so folks know that, that is not forgotten.
I, I think every year it's important to remind folks, Budget 101, for the folks who don't do it all the time. I mean, that it's just important to understand. Today is just the first conversation on the presentation of our budget. Let me see. So I've received some specific requests I'd like to share. I know Dr. Cashwell and I've talked about these sign language. I would like to see some funding that doesn't, I don't, I don't know where it would be covered in the slides, but I've received quite a few requests for sign language to be added as an elective in our schools. Is there any room in the budget for this?
I think there are a number of considerations even outside the budget programmatically, but we definitely hear that request. I know we've had some student interest there as well, and that's something our team has been looking at, being able to fold into, to courses, or at least provide access, if not offered in-house at our school. So I'll absolutely follow up on that while we hear the request and work with the team on a follow-up to that.
Thank you so much. In addition, I've heard from some folks, and I don't know where this would be covered in the budget, but our eight-block funding. There is concern that teachers who are currently in schools that are having an eight-block day in the high school versus a seven-block day, that perhaps educators could be leaving one building to go to another building, because if you're, something about how the pay structure works, again, that's really weedy, probably for today's discussion. But I wanted to put it on your list or ask if it's somewhere behind the text that I see up on the screens.
We'll take note of that. Yes.
Okay. And then, let me see. Is there, I, I know you and Dr. Hughes mentioned the secondary supports for literacy. Does that include not just middle school but high school? As you know, I've been asking for this and was hoping to see it in the budget. Many of our students not only struggle in elementary school, but also in middle school and in high school with not only reading literacy, but math literacy as well. Is there additional funding there too?
Yeah, what you're seeing here is the two exceptional education reading teachers, which will pilot that middle school level program. But, and of course, we would hope to expand that and if applicable to even our high schools, once we know more about the pilot. But across the board, where we added, even previous to this budget, our new reading specialist positions, those are meant to cover the K. 12 arena. And as you know, while we're funding those currently through S R. Funds, the plan is to move those into the ongoing general fund as we come off of that S R. Funding. So while not reflected in this presentation, that need is met through that area as well as through our, our comprehensive literacy plan that we've adopted and moved toward that's K. 12.
Thank you for highlighting that. I mean, we had a lot of these issues prior to the pandemic. They've just been exacerbated. So thanks for highlighting the support that's in the budget.
So yeah, those would be 15 positions. That would not be new and additional, because we are funding them through S R.
Okay, thank you. And then I think I'll share joy with Ms. Ogburn about Code RVA tuition, ADA funding, our CTE funding, all the different funding opportunities that we're covering. And then I'd like to note HVA funding. I'm excited to see this somewhere, and I'd like to ask the superintendent if the team would present an HVA update to the board.
We look forward to bringing that, absolutely.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you so much, Mr. Wack. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it as well.
Thank you.
All right, we'll look forward to, I think the tenor from the group here is one of, of, as I said, enthusiasm around this budget. So really pleased about that. But certainly look forward to continuing to update the board and our community. As we mentioned, this is the first step unveiling that proposed budget and got a few miles yet to go, but a great start. All right.